Come to order. I'd like to open the special meeting of Tiffin City Council for June 28, 2021. Order, I would ask Councilman Gillig if he would lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. If you would join me in this prayer. Lord, we pray for our mayor, our city council, and all those that serve our community. Strengthen us with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens we carry. May we manage our teams and projects with love. Amen. Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gillig. That was very nice. Okay, I'll ask Council Clerk Ian Forrest to please call the roll.
Councilman Gillig.
Here on time this time.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Leopard.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Councilman Perry.
Present.
And Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of council were present. The special meeting, the purpose is with Charter Section 3.09B. We are announcing that we're having this meeting this evening. The purpose of the meeting is for consideration to discuss the changes to the charter proposed by the Charter Review Commission and any other business that may be brought before this council. Do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. We have no minutes. Do we have any committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. Nobody sees the need for another meeting, do they? We got a couple days left this week. I mean, we could squeeze something in.
Get one in at the end of the month.
All right. Reports to officers. It's Aaron D. Mott.
Well, since last meeting was so short, I figured I'd have about an hour-long report.
There you go.
I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Clerk of Council, Ian Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications?
No, sir. We have no written communications.
Thank you. All right, we're now under oral communications. Anybody from attending public that wishes to address council, please step forward to the podium, give us your name, and sign in. Okay, thank you. Do we have any motions? Oh, wait, wait. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I want to, okay, we have no motions. Is this in an ordinance form?
No, if I can suggest, one thing you could do is that you could, you could, you could add the purpose of this meeting to other business because it doesn't seem to necessarily fit in any particular of the normal agenda items, but it would be other business and you could have the discussion at that time.
Thank you.
And see, and there's no formal ordinance that is being proposed today. It's just to review the proposed changes submitted by the Charter Review Commission for charter amendments.
Thanks, Law Director. He can tell I didn't think through that very well.
You're, you're fine.
All right. Any motions? No motions? Any resolutions or ordinances? We're now under other business. We're going to consider the changes that the Charter Review Commission has presented to council. We also have members of the Charter Review Committee. I'd like for you to be recognized. Kenny, you want to, you want to announce everybody or? Well, you know, come up here. Let's, let people, let people, because you guys, you guys did yeoman work here and it was, you've worked at it a long time, so I just.
I'll just say a few brief remarks.
That's fine. Thank you.
Just so you know, this is our first meeting, actually, where we've been in person together during our entire time as the Charter Review Commission. If you remember, we were elected at the end of, what, 2018, started our service in 2019, but then COVID hit. So I know the mayor also had to appoint a few more members on the commission because I think we only had four or five people that actually were on the ballot, so we needed a total of nine. So the mayor had to get his appointments together, and then we had the problem of we couldn't meet in person. So through the city, and I know the mayor was a part of that, we were able to get a bunch of Zoom meetings together during, actually, last summer. I mean, we're supposed to serve, I think, for 18 months, and we lost like the first five months to COVID before we had a Zoom meeting where we finally got everybody together. In fact, if I remember right, the first Zoom meeting we had, we didn't have enough, I think, for a quorum for purposes of doing business, so we had to have the next month after that to get started. So I just want to thank the city. The mayor actually was very instrumental in helping us get set up on the Zoom meetings. And of course, Audrey served as our clerk and did a wonderful job keeping us organized because we never met in person until just now when we're presenting these proposals to the, to the city council. The other thing I want to tell you is I want to appreciate the participation by members of the council. I know Mr. Jones was part of the meeting. Dawn Yanatuno, I know you were part of a meeting or two, and there probably were a few others. I know Dale, you were part of the meeting. The mayor was part of just about every meeting we had, I think.
Yeah, had to be, right?
Yeah. Somebody had to run. That's right, for the Zoom meeting. Turn it over to Audrey to run. And we had some great input. In fact, I was on the commission 10 years ago, and we didn't have near as much input from members of council and the administration in those in-person meetings 10 years ago compared to the Zoom meetings. And I thought that was wonderful. That was one of the, what I would say, surprising outcomes that was helpful as part of the Zoom meetings, is we did have more participation from not just the council, but also from the community. There were interested people that got on the Zoom call and provided input. So I don't mean to speak for everybody else other than I'm the chairman, and of course, we have our vice chairman, Molly DePue. And if you, the rest of you would like to introduce yourselves that are here, we know Bryce. Go ahead and.
Who is that? Does he have a last name? Bryce who?
Bryce Riggs. Audrey is our clerk, and of course, Karen Miller was also a member. So we have a majority of our members here today. A few of the others couldn't make it. But I just wanted to thank the city for helping us get through the process. We did it in 12 months when we should have, you know, had a full complement 18 months, but that was because of COVID. So we appreciate it. Just in general, I mean, we all certainly are able to answer any questions you may have, but I would like to just interject that 80% of what we have as part of the proposed changes for the ballot really are what I would call minor, not very significant in terms of substantive changes. Okay, about 20%, I would suggest, might consider substantive, and a lot of it's related to Tiffin's unique open primary process. And there was some clarification that we gave to that section of the charter, that we had a lot of input from people on our commission and also from outside people that had an interest in it. So other than that, we certainly would, would think that the council and would expect the council would approve the changes here so that we can have them on the ballot for the voters to consider. But any of us are open to any kind of questions you may have about the process or what we had as changes that we proposed. Thank you.
Thanks. Do any of the other members want to, any comments they want to make? Once again, we really appreciate your effort and all the work and that went into it. It's great for our community. We've got people like you to do that for us, and, you know, thanks. Thanks again. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over to the law director and let him work through the, work through the changes with us. So.
Thank you. And Ken and I have not talked about this, but if it's okay, I'll go through and, and work through the changes. And if there's anything that I say that is, you think is not clear or inaccurate, you know, jump in, wave your hand, and I'll, I'll defer to you, and we can clarify what needs to be. What I thought, the best way to start would be to give you a, a list of the groupings of the charter amendments, and then we can go through quickly the, the actual provisions that are being changed. And there may be, and this is not a final determination, but there may be seven ballot questions that you would, you would pass along to the voters. And maybe that's a good, good point to address the procedure. The charter says that you are supposed to hear these recommendations, and then you approve by ordinance, and I believe it's two-thirds vote in each ordinance, to submit to the voters in the fall. And I apologize, I didn't nail it down, but I think August 4th is the deadline, 90 days in advance. I could be wrong, and I will get that definite date for you next, at the next meeting. But you should authorize legislation to be prepared as soon as possible, if that's what you're inclined to do, so that they can be read at three separate meetings and allow for the legislation to go into effect. And we can submit this to the Board of Elections timely so that the, the questions can be placed on the ballot. Because it's not just one question for all the changes, it's based on subject matter. So the first category would be kind of a cleanup and clarification. And this involves various sections, and they deal with cleanup and clarification of these different categories. The first is that you'll see, and as we go through it, you'll see that we try to make the, the language gender neutral. In the past, the current charter has a lot of references to the male pronouns, and we've tried to change that. Even though we have a language that right now says that if it refers to a particular gender, it means all genders, but we know as decades go by that we need to be as inclusive as possible. And so the effort you'll see here through the language is to, to make it a truly gender neutral throughout the, throughout the charter. So that means that that gender neutrality language is going to be reflected in many provisions, not just one. It goes throughout, and we'll go through those real quickly here in a minute. There's also a reference to a partisan prime. As you know, last 10 years ago, we created an open primary and moved away from a partisan primary. We have a unique system that allows in this open primary for candidates to identify themselves with a particular party, but it really is not a partisan primary. And we had a kind of an old language that, in Section 3.08, that had referenced partisan primary. Another section for cleanup, we refer to the finance director, but technically, the position's called Director of Finance, not, not Finance Director. Just like, even though I may call myself at times the law director, but really, the formal and stated title in the, in the charter is Director of Law. So we've cleaned that up. And then as a part of the gender neutrality, we use the term person. And so instead of using some of the common pronouns of their or they, the thought was to use, and we'll show you example in a minute, using the term person, because that would include all genders. And, but when you use the term person in other areas of law, that could mean a business entity, a corporation. You may not think so, but there is statutory and case law in Ohio that does use that. So we clarified in Section 11.06 what a person means and why it's being used in the charter. So that's first, is cleanup and clarification. Next is in Section 3.09B, we talk about notices of special meetings. As you know, you receive notices hand-delivered, but maybe there's another way, a better way, an alternative way. And we give everyone from council an email address issued by the city, and then that could be a way of notifying council members of special meetings instead of just the personal delivery that we've used in the past. Next topic grouping is the publication of ordinances. As you know, when you pass an ordinance, then it is, is published to the community so they know what the legislation is, and they can read the title. And if they want to, they could get the complete ordinance and determine how, whether they have questions, whether they want to circulate a referendum petition. And this is, the method is right now to publish it into a newspaper, but we thought that adding, posting it in the city's website could be an alternative. And you'll see this common kind of theme throughout, and it's not to necessarily suggest the demise of the local newspaper, the advertiser Tribune, but we just understand the reality of journalism and newspapers in our community. And the newspaper may look very different in the next five, 10, 20 years. So we need to have some sort of contingencies for dealing with possible changes. So posting on the city's website seems to be a good alternative to publication in the newspaper. I think even the language there is "and," so we're trying to get it, get the word out as much as possible. Next section is 5.01. We're clarifying the procedures for the vacancy in the office of the mayor's office. There was, if you had read through it, there was some confusion about how that vacancy should be filled. And, and even if the president of council would refuse and choose not to serve, what would be the, the process for finding a replacement to fill the vacancy? The next section is in six points, in Section 6, and in several, three sections, it eliminates the residency requirement for the finance director, the assistance to the director of law, and the city administrator. This is consistent with state law. We've talked about it in different settings about the state residency requirements for employees of the city. State law changed this over 10 years ago, and there have been challenges. Home Rule has tried to say, no, that should be a local right to, to the change of residency requirements, but there's been Supreme Court cases that say no. And we, you may recall, 10 years ago, the issue of eliminating residency requirements was placed on the ballot, and this was the only charter provision that was not approved by the voters 10 years ago. Because naturally, when you read it, the voters, and I, says a testament to the, to at least the community in reading these, is that they read the, the proposal, and I think they would want the employees, these particular employees, to be residents of the community. But state law says we can't do that, so it's unenforceable. And so this is another effort to go back to the community and say, we understand your concerns about residency requirement, but we maybe need to educate them to say that we can't enforce this. So let's clean this up, remove it from the charter. The sixth grouping would be to use, to update our contracting section, Section 8.02. In reviewing that section, it, it, it needs some recognition of some of the changes in the state law that allows different construction and contracting methods. And we'll talk about those in particular when we get to Section 8.02. And then the last, Section 7 grouping is in Section 10.01 that cleans up some items in the open primary nominating, nomination of candidates section. We've lived with that for 10 years, and I think overall, the community supports it. I think we found that we like that, our system that allows for, in the nominating process, that anyone can vote for any person being nominated, or to nominate them in a primary. You can, you don't have to just stay in your lane of, of your party. Gives an opportunity for the first time that my wife could vote for me in a, in a primary if I was opposed. She, she was a different party. So it is more of an open, and as we understand partisan, partisanship may not matter a whole lot. I mean, I look around the room, and I have to think hard as what party you really belong to, because I look at you as public servants, and I think most of the people in the community think that. So I believe that it's been well-received by the community, but it needs to be tweaked in a few areas that we'll go over here in a few minutes. So that's the, the groupings, and there may be seven different groupings, seven different ordinances that are presented to you that, that you would then present. So just on the groupings, are there any questions? And if I can ask, any comments from the commission members? Did that seem generally accurate? Okay. So let's, let's go through, and I know, you know, for, you know, the commission may know that we were at a meeting starting at 4:00, so probably everybody's looking at me. Go quickly. But what, if I can ask, that you take a look, if you have, either on your, probably all paper or electronically, if you look at the redline version of the report of the Charter Review Commission. So if you have that in front of you, I could just go through section by section and very quickly tell you which grouping it belongs to. Okay? So 3.06A, that deals with the gender neutral language. As you can kind of read through there, you know, we take out some of the references to, we, we add the person's election instead of his. So that's a gender neutral change. 3.07 is also a gender neutral change. 3.08, and if I, I'm going to go through rather quickly, but if you want to ask a question or anything, you can just jump in and interrupt me. 3.08, that's the section at the beginning that we removed the partisan primary language, because we, we don't have that. That was just something that we could have picked up last time. We didn't, so that's just a cleanup. Also, in that section, gender neutral language is, is contained. And at the end of 3.8 is another gender neutral change. Then 3.08C, again, gender neutral. And also in 3.08C4, there's other references to gender neutral. And some cleanups, as you'll see later, that some of the, the references to 5.01, we deleted one section that we'll talk about here in just a minute. 3.09B, that is the, the section that deals with special meetings of city council and how you would be advised of those meetings. And it, you can see it adds, or delivering, instead of in-person delivery, but it also has, you can receive a notice by email addressed to each member. So it's at your city email addresses. So for all council members, if this passes, you got to keep track of your email, city email. You got to watch that for any notices to meetings. 4.04 talks about the zoning process. And in that, you know, we have a kind of an elaborate, if you will, zoning process to make sure that there is adequate notice to the public on any changes to the zoning, anything related to zoning. And so we've put to that that there should be a posting on the city's website of the notice of the public hearing on a zoning matter. That's in addition to publishing in the newspaper. But we do add a clause there that says that if there is such a newspaper, and that's the newspaper is of general circulation within the city, and that's kind of a defined term under state law. And if there's not a, a newspaper, it would be a newspaper determined by council to be of circulation in the city. So that could potentially be Blade, or The Dispatch, or some other new newspaper that may not be of general circulation, but it is circulated in some form in the city, and council would make that determination. The posting that we were talking about on the city's website, just like publication, has to be seven days in advance of the public hearing. Next, in 4.08A, this deals with the publishing of notice of ordinances once they are passed, ordinances or resolutions. And you can see that it adds the city's website by posting the full text of an ordinance. So add work for the clerk of council. And we also deal with that same issue of newspaper. It is published in the newspaper by title only, if there is a newspaper. But then again, you know, that if there isn't, then we don't have that requirement. We didn't want to set ourselves up for maybe an impossibility. I think that's really kind of the, the essence of that 4.08A. Yes?
Council Jones. Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I wasn't, shouldn't say I wasn't listening. I could use that at home. Can we ask questions now, or?
Sure, as we go.
Yeah, go.
On page four, it says, "Council shall be in charge of posting in five public places." I think I attended one of the meetings. I never heard where the five public. I never heard where the five public places are. I don't think that's been defined. I'm curious, is it the library? Is it my house? Is it downstairs, up here in his own thing? And Molly's?
Your house is a public place now?
Her new apartment?
Uncle Mike's.
Molly's moving, we can move it over there? No.
That is, it's by council, council action. And I believe that we did pass legislation 10 years ago that lays out what those public places are. You can change that anytime. It's, it's up to council to determine what is a, a public place for publication of posting the ordinances.
Somebody other than me is going to ask that someday, and now is not a good time to answer that, so, no.
It's up to council's authority to do that.
Right?
Yes.
It's probably a great move that the commission was looking for alternates, because approximately six weeks ago, the Toledo Blade stopped home delivery in Tiffin.
Good point.
I heard that. So, again, respect for newspapers. I believe in them, but we're.
We love you.
We want, yeah, we want the AT to be thriving. Well, we want you to have a job, Nicole. And, you know, it's a way of getting the word out about what we do. You know, a lot of people don't tune in on Facebook or otherwise, and so this is their one way of knowing what goes on, and keeps us all honest to do our job the right way, because we know that they provide transparency. So it's definitely a necessary part of city government and democracy.
Councilman Gill, we had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
More so, more so a story. I think the commission did a phenomenal job, yeah, very short, with changing this to also email. When I was appointed a council back in 2017, I was appointed on a Monday, and then we had Lincoln on Friday, and I was at the Blanchard Valley Hospital, and my phone rang, and it was the Tiffin Police Department. They're like, Ben, we're trying to get ahold of you. And I, what for? Oh, we have a notice to deliver, you're not there. Well, I'm sorry, I'm a little busy right now, so. I think the email would be perfect.
Okay. All right. Section 4.09B deals with the codification, recodification. And again, we're adding posting on the city's website, and dealing with the issue of newspaper, if it exists or doesn't exist. 5.01, the A and B, that was combined, because it all kind of dealt with the same kind of subject matter. You can see that, it was kind of combined, if you will, referencing the, a little bit the history of 1979, every four years for the mayor's election. So it was somewhat redundant, so we just combined the two sections together. Then Section 5.01, it, it cleans up some references to a party nomination, which again doesn't exist. It has some gender neutrality language. And then also, I guess the most substantive change in this section is that, under D, the new D, it does allow for council to, if the president of council does not choose to fill the office of the mayor in a vacancy, then in the past, council would elect from its members a person having the qualifications to be the mayor. Now, it's just generally stated, shall elect a person. So which means that anyone from the community that has the qualifications to serve as an elected officer, and that's laid out in Section 11.01 of the charter, then, then that, then that person's eligible. So it opens up a wider net, so it's just not the ones around this table that could be filling a vacancy for mayor. We thought that that was more appropriate, because it may be hard to find really the best candidate that has the time to serve. That's pretty much cleanup of that 5.01. 5.02 and 5.04, again, are some gender neutral changes, along with 5.05. 6.01, 02, and 03 deal with the residency requirement that I talked about. So those are to comply with state law. Councilman Jones?
I got a 20 percenter that Mr. Egbert was talking about. Very minor, but suggests we change Finance Director to Director of Finance. I didn't make that meeting. What is the big deal about that, or why? What's the rationale behind it?
Well, it's just consistency of what the, the true name of the office. It's Director of Finance. That's state law is what, and it's, it means the same thing, I agree, but.
Proper title.
But it is.
It's not broke?
Well, but we're, might as well make consistent language, and this is an opportunity to clean that up.
So we have Law Director, Finance Director, and?
Well, it's Director of Law, Director of Finance. Those are the official titles.
Got it backwards?
Yeah. Don't call me Law Director, call me Director of Finance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can, I'll put that there for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Glad my title's one, one name. I'll bring the other 19% up later.
We'll have to watch that in our committee reports.
According to 5.02, you're also our Commander in Chief. It said judicial and military powers granted to the mayors.
You didn't see that RPG we bought?
No.
Okay, go on to 7.05. This deals with Charter Review Commission. And we, our current deadlines are to file nominating petitions 75 days prior to the election, which is unusual. That's different than the filing of other petitions that are typically 90 days prior. So the thought was to make that consistent with, with state law and other, other filings. So then that, we had to move back the, the date with, which the mayor must provide notice of the election. So there was just a movement of dates back a little bit away from the election of Charter Review Commission members. And then also, in addition to publishing in the newspaper, which we, unfortunately, we didn't find enough people interested, we also suggested that it would be posted on the city's website. And the mayor also may use other methods of notice, using electronic platforms as he deems appropriate. Next is 802, deals with the Contracting Authority. And most of the changes, I guess, let's look at, go on to really H, I think that's the most substantive changes here. And what that outlines in H is, is allowing for you to, the city, to enter into contracts without advertising and bidding, consistent with state law. So it doesn't change the bidding requirement that you have and, and when you bid. What it does is specifically allows for the city to follow state law in, in, in non-bidding situations. And those are, some of them are outlined here. One is an emergency. H1 deals with an emergency situation, and the language some of you may recognize, because there's been less than a handful of times that I know of in 26 years that we've used it. But there have been some times where you, as council, voted that there was a, as the language says, a real and present emergency or urgent necessity requiring immediate work. So we lay out that you have that right. It is under state law, but it's also now specifically included in the charter. Under two, and you've used this before, there's cooperative and state purchasing programs that does provide bidding, but you're not actively doing it. You know, through the cooperative program, there is bidding to try to get the lowest price. There's state purchasing that does the same thing. And you, again, we avail ourselves to that opportunity specifically in the charter. The next one is design professionals. And as you may know, when we hire a design professional for public improvement, we go through a, a request for qualification process. And so we don't have to go through the bidding process. Again, this specifically allows for that to happen in, with city contracts. Four and five address the city's ability to hire a, enter into a contract with a construction manager at risk, or a design-build firm. About the same time, 10 years ago, that the charter was amended, state law allowed for other construction and delivery methods. And they involve not only just a, hire a general contractor to do work through a bidding process, but there is a procedure to hire what's called a construction manager at risk. And it's not a formal bidding process, per se. And this, again, allows the city to, to use that method. Example of that method was the Justice Center. As you may recall, we were educated about that process. John Larson's firm came down and had a, one of his partners that dealt with contracts, public contracts, in particular, public contract disputes, and knew very well the changes that took place. And so, a construction manager at risk is just a different construction contracting method. Same way with design-build. Design-build is not a true bidding process. It is a different statutory process. In five, we allow for the, the city to, to use that. Finally, in six is a catch-all. As it says, if there's any other way that we can enter into a contract without advertising and bidding, we are exercising our ability to do that. So that's kind of a significant change. Doesn't really give us anything that state law doesn't provide, but it makes it certain that we have that full, kind of, full options and alternatives. And depending on the type of contract, you may want to enter into it using one of these methods and not the, the normal competitive bidding process. Any questions about 802?
There's a, there's a certain amount that we don't have to bid it out, 50,000 or something like that.
Correct, and that's.
So item six is, if that went up by, by the state, then that covers.
That's right, that's right. And there's also language, I think, otherwise, that, that only says that the bidding is required if it is, if it is a contract that involves a sum of money that is more than the, that, the bidding threshold that you're talking about. Continuing on, 902 deals with the Finance Director's title. Councilman Jones?
Got it in there.
Yeah. And gender neutrality is listed there.
Is this new? Director of Law?
You mean?
Is that a new plaque or do?
I think so. I never had one in our former.
His title's been the same, though.
Yeah, the title's changed, has not changed. It's the same title.
How comes I in six, call you Law Director? When we?
It's just, it's just.
That'll change.
I'll answer to anything.
If it's a legal question, I'll respond.
Bigger fish to fry here.
Yeah, that's right. I wouldn't spend a lot of time.
It's all leopards' fault. It's all your fault. You call him Law Director.
Well, it is, and if you look in your agenda, it is Director of Law. I mispronounce it every time.
It's Rich's fault.
In, in Section 9.04, you'll see more gender neutral language. And then also, under D, and this deals with, this deals with recall procedures. And we added, since it dealt with publication in a city newspaper, or in a newspaper, we also said that the recall would be published by posting on the city's website, at least 14 days prior to, to the election. So again, it was, we noticed that there was, anytime there's a publication in a newspaper, tried to have a discussion as to what alternatives that there might be. Section 10, Section 10 is, Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Director of Law.
Just raise your hand, just so you could say that.
This is in our hands now, City Council's hands.
Correct.
Charter Commission has done their due diligence. And I was going to bring up, and maybe the seven of us would agree with me, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize for that, but 9.3, or 933.042, and 933.99, in the charter, or the ordinances, charter, whatever. In the second ward, there's a property where they have abandoned cars. And someone from the police department even suggested that City Council put some teeth into that language. And defer to you, but my understanding now, they have 10 days to remove these abandoned cars, if you will. If they don't, it's a minor misdemeanor, and a minor misdemeanor is, what, up to $150 fine. A month later, they get a complaint again from the same location, that police officer goes down there, move these cars, or we'll give you 10 days, or we're going to fine you $150. That's happened twice. I don't want to listen to this for the next 10 years. So is there some way we can look at that language?
Well.
Put it before the voters, and I don't know who in Tiffin would say, no, don't find someone $300 the second time, and don't find someone $1,000 the third time, and don't put them in jail the fourth time. So I thought I would throw that out and see if anyone's.
Well, as you mentioned, the, the section is a codified ordinance section. It's not a charter section. We're talking about charter. The charter deals with kind of the, the structure of your, of government. And you can, at the next meeting, you could bring up the issue that you're talking about, and probably a council committee could look at it and amend that ordinance to make it harsher on, by penalty or otherwise, so. But that's, that's where it's appropriate, not, not in the charter.
Well, I'm, I'm here to learn, and I'm, I'm getting smarter. Can you imagine that? Me getting any smarter?
Zach needs some stuff to do.
Section 10.01 deals with some cleanup of the nominating process. As we go through it, the first underlined section that talks about the petitions, so I'll set forth the name and address of the candidate, that, that language is, is just in another part of Section 10.01. So it's just moved from below, and you'll see where it's been crossed out. Down below, in the fourth paragraph, the petition for state, a statement of candidacy, now will need to designate a three-member committee composed of qualified electors of the city to represent the candidate. And the reason for that is that when we get to issues of filling the vacancy of candidates on the ballot by withdrawal, or by disqualification, or by death, the state law has a method that allows for independent candidates that don't fall back on local parties, that they have a committee that would allow for those, those vacancies to be filled. And so, the, the statement of candidacy that is presented to the Board of Elections needs to identify the three members of the committee that would have that authority. This came up because there was a question about, from the Board of Elections, one of the, the members of the board had concerns about whether it was clear on what would happen if there was a withdrawal of a, of a member, or of a candidate. How would that be, be filled, that vacancy? How would that be, be filled, that vacancy? I think it would probably fall back on state law. That's probably what my opinion would be. And you'd figure out what state law would seem to apply when we have a nonpartisan primary, open primary. But there was some question as to whether that would be the correct interpretation in those situations. So, this is our opportunity to make it clear. And so, we've used language from the statutes that apply when there is not a partisan primary. There's no candidate that would, there's no central committee that would fill if somebody is a truly nonpartisan candidate they present. So, that's the general explanation of what we're doing here in section 10.01. So, go ahead.
Designation three.
The candidate would. So, when they submit their petition, they would fill in the three electors from the community on their statement of candidacy. I know we talked about it, Brenton Charter Review, but what happens if that person forgets and leaves that section blank? I think it's an invalid petition, just like there's any parts... And we'll, we'll show you the petition form where it includes those three people. But you have to complete the petition in order to be, the board can look at it and decide whether it meets the requirements, and it probably would not at that point, I would say. On, further down in section 10.01, the next full strike-through paragraph is kind of a lengthy paragraph on page 15 of the comparison provisions. You'll see that it removes the right of a write-in candidate at a primary election. The discussion was that, should there be a write-in candidate? And if so, when in the process should there be a write-in candidate? And I think the consensus was that, in the primary process, that it should only be for candidates that have completed the statement of candidacy and has, have the necessary petitions. That everybody should have the ability to do that, and should, that's not a big hurdle for them to do, to accomplish, but they should present that to be on the ballot in the primary. The only time a write-in candidate really is necessary is, again, if there is, as we have it now, if there are not enough candidates that were elected in the primary. So, for example, if there are not, if it's not a competitive race, if there's not two candidates running for a ward council position or the mayor's position, law director, director of law. In those cases, writing candidates would be permissible to make sure that there's competitive races. But there are deadlines for those. But, so the only time a write-in candidate would be allowed will be in the general election, but under only certain circumstances. One of which is that I said that there, that there should be a full slate of options for, for a particular race. For the councilman-at-large positions, if there's less than six, then a write-in candidate would be allowed. There are more than six, or six or more, then no write-in candidates would be allowed. If there are two running for a single position, then no write-in candidates would be allowed. So, this removes that write-in candidacy in the primary. Down below at the bottom, we did add that the president of council was just an omitted provision that, although it's logical that there would be two candidates receiving at the primary election, you see the director of law, the mayor, and ward council members' positions were referenced in that section. For some reason, the president of council was just not included. But we didn't forget them this time, and we'll add that position. The next, on page 16, the next large sections of changes, they deal with what I was referring to before. If a candidate withdraws or is disqualified, then the first, that first paragraph, if that happens, then the vacancy is created, is filled by majority of the committee of three on the statement of candidacy. There's a deadline for fulfilling that, and that is 86 days prior to the general election. And, and if the write-in candidate has the ability to file 72 days before, so that would give a 14-day time period that if, say, there was a candidate that withdraws, then, then, and people aren't satisfied with the, the person that's filling the vacancy on the ballot, then a write-in candidate could file and be on the ballot themselves, not in their name explicitly, but be qualified to receive votes in the fall. That language is practically verbatim from state law also. So is the, the next section that deals with what happens if a candidate dies prior to the election. And there is a procedure, state law, and we follow it here, that the majority of the committee of three can designate a candidate, or a vacancy, fill the vacancy if a candidate dies prior to the 10th day before the election. The next section deals with what I was talking about, when a write-in is allowed. And the date for, or the time for filing a write-in candidate is the 72nd day preceding the regular election. Then you see the actual statement of candidacy, and the addition of putting the designations of the three, three persons on the person's committee that was added to the form.
One thing, one thing to note, we are council members. We're not councilmen and councilwomen.
Right.
Well, Rich calls us congressmen and congresswomen.
Sorry, couldn't read this.
That last meeting was vicious.
The, the rest of the, the section 10.02, 03, and 04, I'll deal with some general language to clean up that we have an open primary system, not a partisan primary, and that we do allow for presentation of questions or issues to, to the voters. And essentially, if we follow the charter, unless there is not a, a provision that applies in a particular case, then we look to the general laws of the state of Ohio if there is not a particular provision in the charter that directs particular action in a situation. Section 11 deals with gender neutrality, again. And in particular, 11.08 gives that definition of a person in the charter. And it says, "The person shall mean an individual and shall not mean a corporation, business trust, estate, partnership, or association." And that's where you'll find in state law and other situations that a person could mean one of those that is referenced there. Obviously, we don't want that a person means an individual. We don't want to elect a corporation to city council. So, those, very quickly, are the groupings. And also, we went through the sections that can show you the changes. Are there any questions? I know we talked about some questions throughout, but are there any questions?
Question that I have is, within the prior to August 1st, do we have to have approval of the language from the Board of Elections, the State Board of Elections?
No, no, because this is our, our charter. And we will work with them, and we, we do give the, the language to the Secretary of State's office. But I don't believe that we have to have that kind of final language. We'll work on it, like we did before. But I don't expect that, I'm not sure that we'll get it. But the timing is that, if you, I would like to see some direction from council, if you can, even tonight, to have legislation prepared for these groupings, if you're ready to do that, so that we could have them possibly ready by next Monday. In years past, we have worked with, and charters passed, we have worked with John Larson's office, John and his office, to prepare the legislation. John and his partner Heather has, they were involved in the charter process. They attended by Zoom the meetings, worked on the language. So, they're very familiar with this, and I would urge you to use them again, like you have probably every 10 years since 1980, to help with the exact language and the process to submit it to the Board of Elections. So, I think we need to keep moving on this, and we'll do what we need to do to make sure that we get language that's acceptable to the, to the Secretary of State's office. But this is a little different than an issue language. This is our charter, so I don't think that they have as much discretion as the, like the Roden Bridge levy and some of the other things that we've encountered, where we, the Secretary of State has more authority over what is a fair question. Here, we pretty much have the authority of how we can ask the voters to approve a charter provision. Councilman Jones?
How is this going to be presented on the ballot? Because 10 years ago, I'm sure I voted 10 years ago. If I went to attend some of the Zoom meetings with the Charter Review Commission and listened to your overview tonight, Director of Law, I would know what the heck I'm voting on. So, is, can I go back 10 years and find an old...
Yeah, and I...
And reread it? Because, like I say, this is all, I shouldn't say great, but you got a handle on it, but it keeps the average citizen...
Yeah, the example, the, the question should try to capture what is being asked of the voters. For example, probably the easiest one would be the, the one regarding the residency requirements. The question on the ballot may read something like, "Shall sections 6.01A, 6.02E, and 6.03E of Tiffin City Charter be amended to eliminate residency requirements for the Director of Finance, assistants to the Director of Law, and the city administrator?" And then we can put, "Consistent with applicable requirements of state law." So, that, and hopefully, the question will be that clear, so people would understand. Maybe the cleanup and clarifications, that might be quite a long, lengthy sentence, but it's going to make sure that we, we tell the public, the voters, that we are changing language to provide for gender neutrality, elimination of references to a partisan primary. I refer to the Director of Finance for, rather than the Finance Director. But those will all be lumped together with that much, hopefully, substantive language to tell them what they're voting on. Does that help?
Yes, it does, yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Councilman Perry?
I've got one question. 4.04, section A, when we were talking about, I know we dealt with this a little bit for the St. Francis property, sending out notices to the adjacent landowners of, you know, the, the property, we want to rezone. I feel like sending out some kind of notice with like a layman's terms, kind of what we're doing and why we're doing it, would help. I mean, save some of our time, too, because people came to the meeting because they didn't understand what we were, you know, doing. So, maybe if we could have, like, Matt Watson write up just a brief summary of, like, we're doing this. You know, this land's being rezoned for this reason. It won't affect you in this way. I feel like if we could add something, I don't know how you even add something like that, but like, a brief summary of exactly what we're doing. Because I felt like it was a little confusing when you send that notice out, because everyone, you know, was up in arms about what was happening when it really wasn't, you know, what they thought it was.
Yeah, I, I guess my recommendation is that we, we don't get too specific in the charter, but that's a, you know, a good practical comment that we need to maybe do a better job of describing in the notice the, the subject matter of, of the public hearing. So, I think that's where we just need to do maybe a better job of that. I don't know that adding language would necessarily change our obligation to provide adequate notice of the substance of the, of the hearing.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? Councilman Leopard? Oh, Kenny?
Just a couple minor things. Brian Young, who's also a member of our commission's here tonight, he was outside when we got started, so we have six members of the nine here tonight, which I'm really happy everyone took the time to come to attend, to support our year's worth of work there on the commission. Also, I, I'm remiss, I forgot to mention Steve Leopard was part of the Zoom meetings. And of course, Brent Howard provided wonderful counsel as the city's law director, director of law, excuse me. John Larson and Heather did a great job. And, and as the chairman of the commission, I'm just speaking for myself here, but, you know, perhaps John Larson could help us out in not only with the ballot language, which I know Squires, Patton Boggs has a great job with that, that they're the experts when it comes to proposed charter amendments. But hopefully, we can also have maybe a layman's type explanation that would go with these proposals, so that the voters maybe can have a better understanding, you know, try to have it in simple layman's terms, so that it's easy to understand. As Brent mentioned, like, with the idea about the residency requirement, it would be nice if the question was asked of the voters, you know, to have this changed to comply with state law and case precedent, so that they know, well, we're just wanting to comply with the law, even though they may have, be uncomfortable about, you know, employees of the city living outside the city. That's, that's the law, and we need to comply with the law. So, maybe a simple explanation like that. And I know it's hard to, to say what that would be, but I think John Larson and Heather would do a great job of putting something together like that. Also, I did want to mention that if the gender-neutral proposals pass, as a member of the commission, I would ask that all the council members would change their placards, because they are gender-based. And everyone could be a council member. So, Mr. Jones, you could be council member of the second ward, which would comply with the new charter provisions if they're approved. So, hopefully, we'll have that support and have it approved, and you can comply with the charter, just like with the Director of Law. Thanks.
Well, it took us 200 years to get that right.
Thanks, Kenny. Councilman Leopard?
First off, I'd like to thank the commission for all their work. It's, I know at times it can be kind of, kind of a burden, but I was on the commission once. I really enjoyed it and learned a lot about the city. And it was a very enjoyable experience, and I hope that you all found that to be true. I would like to make a motion, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I would so move that we authorize the law director to prepare ordinances...
To accept the...
To accept the report of the Charter Review Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept the, prepare an ordinance to accept the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission. Do we have a second, Councilman Perkins?
Yeah, I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? Did you have your...
No, I... It's okay. Playing favorites, it's fine.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to really thank all of our, yeah, Commission members as well. You all were a real pleasure to work with. Looking out there at all of you, the only thing I wish was that we had a a Tom on the Commission, because then I could have said, Tom, Ken, Cade, Karen, Bryce, Molly, and Brian, but we can't say Thomas Kincaid, you know, but. And then also, of course, Victor Perez really helped out with this as well. Victor's coaching baseball this evening, so he was unable to make it. And also Mary Phillips and Toria Felton, who are the other members. It went extremely well. I know I was on city council the last time we had our our Charter Review Commission, and there certainly wasn't this level of engagement. You all were were a real pleasure to work with, and every single one of them brought something a little different to the dynamic and to the table with the discussion. So I appreciate it, and I hope some of you consider in the future, whether it's running for city council, whether it's running for Charter Review Commission again, I hope you all stay active, stay involved. We always have vacancies on our city boards and commissions. So if any of you ever have interest in being appointed to anything like that, please let me or a member of council know. We love having good, active members on all of our city boards and commissions. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you also for allowing us to sit in. It was, I found it interesting listening to the dialogue and going back and forth, and I tried not to butt in, so I just tried to listen sometimes. And but I really appreciate it, and I think Zoom kind of helped a lot in some ways, that made it easier for everybody to attend and made it easier for me to attend occasionally too. So I thought that was great. And so I wanted to thank you also. And just to comment on the residency, I think it's going to be an issue unless we really put something special in there, because it comes up in everything I've ever been in with school board, and residency is always a big deal.
Anyone else? Any other discussion?
I enjoyed seeing everybody's animals on Zoom, too. Talking about my kids.
We have a motion, a second. Is, if there's no other comment, I'm going to ask all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. That's it for the agenda. Anything for the good of the order?
Glad you were sharing with me.
Thanks again to all of you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. We're adjourned.
Dale.
I can go eat.
Don't change my.
I don't think, I don't think Ann's going to be able to fit my title on the.
Oh, yeah, that's by that time.
I've got the longest candidate.
As a council member or a councilperson, I'm a little.
Council member.
I can't wait to go eat.
One word.
Yeah, it's what.
Until the next council meeting, I'm dragging out.
Or no, I said that, and then he said, no, you should be Director of the City. I said, no, 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 you're going to be fired. Mayor won't like that.
Do I have to call on you? Do I have the prerogative of calling on anybody I want? If I could ignore somebody? Yeah, I suppose. I see it happen on Congress, Congress all the time.
I wish you'd asked that sooner.
Glad you're not Mitch McConnell. Or Nancy. Glad you're not Jerry Adler, an Adler.
I had a special invite to Good Shepherd Home. No, but it fell on a regular council night.
My president's in town.
She's not well overall.
Special invite, I don't know if they wanted you as a resident or what.
Look down our park, we got everybody.
Every year they have this deal. It's always on council.
I don't know, because I've never been able.
That was too much for.
Tuesday. That's just a day.
Yeah, that's true.
We did it.
Yep, that's how we got.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been through it, Ben, I know.
Yes, catches up with this.
I'm losing my voice, and I think I didn't take my own.
He might, he might.
I take the Claritin.
He's a great guy.
Oh, he is, he's, he's a.
That's your take.
It clears it up for me right when I take it.
He's a great attorney, really smart guy, super nice guy.
That was a smart move.
It stopped mom to drop the food off for dinner for her. And she has it, and I was in such a hurry that.
I don't think someone got that sign out in the studio tonight. Three years and minutes.
Take care.
Well, they dumped that on Ken Hager Jr. quickly. I said, which of the seven, you kick him up with that Director of Law. I'll take blame for that. Want me to turn, I'll turn these around.
No, we're good. I'm just trying to decide what to order the new plaques.
We got to vote on it, don't we? In November, no?
It has to pass.
Once it passes, then.
Wait till January.
What is the effective date then? It passes in the fall election.
I don't know.
So maybe, there is no hurry.
Yeah. Well, you can all take your old plaques home with you then.
Want me to put these down like, or?
Nah, doesn't matter. If there's another meeting, yeah, I'll take it down.
I can take them down, yeah. Thank you, Ken.
Well, I thought these were going to be two shorter meetings than what they were.
Hopefully, this is the end of our gargantuan meetings for a little while now. We'll have shorter meetings in the next few weeks.
Anything else seems shorter. See ya, guys.
Good night, Jen.
Good night.
It was great. Yeah, we went down to Cincinnati and saw friends, and we went on to Roanoke, Virginia, and has to been to Roanoke before.
Did you stay at the Roanoke Hotel or?
No, we stayed at a courtyard, just an Eduardo-type place. And then we went on to Cumberland, Virginia. We have friends there. We've been, then we stayed with my daughter in Springfield, Virginia, for three, four days, and her grandchildren.
That's a pretty state, you know, Roanoke is a beautiful area.
Went through a town that I didn't realize. Have you ever heard of Bedford, Virginia, where the Bedford Boys were from? They lost an entire regiment, 20, 20 individuals, a small town in Bedford, Virginia. For capital, they had more losses in World War II than any other city. So they built this World War II memorial. It's a very interesting little city, but we didn't know about it. So next time, we're going to actually spend there too, just in Bedford, Virginia.
What part of Virginia, where is that?
It's between Roanoke and Farmville, if you know where Farmville is.
What direction?
It would be, it would be east of Roanoke, northeast of Roanoke.
So is that kind of, did you go on the Skyline Drive a little bit?
We did a little bit, yeah. Yeah, but the part of it was under construction, so we kind of got off again.
That's a pretty area. I haven't been there in decades, but it was, been there, it was really nice.
Yeah, they've got that star of the, on the hill, and Roanoke, it's a big star at night that's illuminated, was put up there in the 40s, I think.
Oh, I don't even remember that. I just remember, I've been to Roanoke one time when I was a kid, and we had to go to the hotel, not to stay there, it was just a famous hotel. I had to use the bathroom. That's what my dad would say as a kid, you know, we're not going to stay here, but we'll go and use the bathroom, see how nice the hotel Roanoke is.
My mother would always make us do that, because she liked to see what kind of lights they have. She always liked the lights and the toilet fixtures. I don't know what a woman would. I guess because.